Technical problem and welcome everyone to our special session of design challenges of inter and inter chipnet interconnection. So please next slide. And here are the four organizers. The first is me and also Le Tian Huang and Morizu Palacy and Ami Kumasi. Please next slide. And we have your six speakers, me and Professor Chi Xiaocheng from Fudan University and Jie Mingying from Nanjing University of Post and Telecommunications. And also Wen Xu Chaofeng University of Electronic Science and Technology of China. And also Professor Yarri Pung from University of Texas. And also Professor Morizu Palacy from University of Katania. Please next slide. And this is the schedules is we already spent some time on the screen problem. So we will directly go to the first talk. I mean, yeah, so please process and share another slides. Yeah, another P P T file. That is my.
Okay, sure. The screen is up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, so my talk, so my talk is on the simulation methodology for chipnet based medical systems. Okay, so the next one. The next one, next slide. And this is our line and the next slide. So here we will very briefly discuss why do we need the multi-chipnet system? So the chipnet's technology is proposed to combat the area war challenge to improve the yield and also to reduce the chip manufacturer cost. Yeah, next slide. And there are some design challenges for multi-chipnet systems. The first is huge design space. A second is we need a simulator. There are some on the state or the R simulators like Sniper Gem Five and G P U C. As there are some problems of the this existing simulators. First is they cannot model the interposer integration accuracy. And then the second is they cannot support large scale simulations. Because for, for example, for the Zebra system, we have like millions of A I cores. And for such a large scale system, we need a fast simulator to support such a large scale system. Okay, next slide. So we propose a simulation methodology and of course we released seven simulators in this GitHub link. The idea is to reuse and integrate existing simulators and to support parallel simulation with an inter chipnet communication and synchronization protocol. And this parallel simulation can support large, large scale systems with accurate integration models. And of course, we can support both shared memory and distributed memory models among the chipnets. Okay, the next slide. Actually, this for any of the simulators. It's a software stack from the circuit and physical layer. We use the interposer wire model and in the in the microarchitecture level, we reuse the existing simulators. And in the inter chipnet network layer, we design a network manager to simulate the inter chipnet work, inter chipnet network. And in the system layer, we support different memory models. And in application layers, we provide A P I S and also programming models and also porting the benchmarks, which are the most time consuming work. Okay, the next slide. So currently, the protocol is like this for the read, we support request and reply. And for the write, we only support the request only by far. And we are working to support the right acknowledgement also. Okay, the next one. So the key here is the inter simulator process, communication and synchronization protocol, so that each simulator process can run in parallel but accurately model the real system. So we depend on the functional model and the timing model files. The functional model guarantees the result is correct and the timing model computes the timing of each event or operations. And for the timing model, like the request and the reply, the packets, we just model them and the computer delays, the transmission delays. And for the functional model, we model the read and the write request, the address data length and also to get the return values. Okay, the next slide. And we need the timing and functional models to coordinate the different simulator processes so that they can run in check. And we also need to synchronize between them. When it's something like a global barrier, something like a global clock, so that everyone can go in synchronicity. And we can also support multiple servers using their network programming to circulate these timing models and the functional model files among different servers, so that we can support large scale systems. Okay, so next slide. So this is working flow of how chiphead I read the data from chiphead K. So here you see the three, the step three, we have the functional model file. And 11, we also have the functional model. This is a request, function model file, recording the address, data lens and so forth, so so forth. And in there, step 11, the function model reports a data. And in the rest of the steps, they involve the timing model files, including the package transmission. And because of due to the time limits, so I will skip the details or the steps. Okay, next slide. And we also support different memory models. Okay, the next slide. And in the program model, we provide a remote read and write functions. And they just connect the application, sorry, the benchmarks and host the files, so that the benchmarks can call some of their discourse or some of the M five ops operations and so that they can generate host machines. Just generate files in the host machines, which are corresponds to the timing or functional model files. Okay, the next slide. Okay, the inter chipnet network manager is very important. It can support different topologies with a topology input file. So that and by far, we can support arbitrary topology. Okay, next slide. So here we show some of the preliminary experimental results. We run different benchmarks, just three benchmarks, and we have six different simulators on the test. The first two have, the first two simulator, S one, S two uses X A six instruction sets. And S three and S four are G P U's. And S six is a heterogeneous simulator with C P U and G P U. Okay, the next slide. So here is some further configurations. Okay, the next slide. And so for most of the benchmarks with more chipnets, so we can have a better speed up with an exception that in the S one as the speed up is not very obvious, even we are slowed down. And the reason might be the communication overhead. Okay, the next slide. As the similar chance is a C N benchmark. Okay, the next slide. And we also test the network only simulator. Here we have sixteen chipnets and each chipnet has sixteen, sixteen cores. And we try to find the separation point. Okay, so the next slide. And this set of experiments test the simulation speedouts. So the thing here is like this, suppose we have, we want to simulate a hundred cores. And we can either simulate all the cores in one process, or we use ten processes where each process simulated ten cores. So this is the simulation speedup. So we can find that in most of the case with more simulator processes spawned. And we have a faster simulation with an exception here in the four, in S one. Okay, so so from these experiments, we can see the benefit of parallel simulation. Okay, the next slide. Okay, so this, here we have some ongoing works, like putting more benchmarks and some of them already done. And you can find them in the GitHub link. And to support more network topologies and emerging technologies like wireless and photonics. And also the design space exploration. Okay, thanks. Since we have, sorry. We have a very tight schedule, so we will skip the Q and A. So we will go directly to the next slide. Okay, so the next talk is given by Professor Chi Xiaocheng from Fudan University. Yes, please go ahead. So, so we can stop the.
So. So just let me try to share their slides. So can I see the slides?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so let's begin. So hello, everyone. My name is Chi Xiaocheng. And today's my talk is about an all digital two point five D intra triplet communication five. And since our time is kind of tight, so I will try to speak fast. So first is the background and the motivation. So why we need our inter triplet five or interconnect? So because recently we have a very rapid increase on the A I high performance computing chips. And for each chip, we wanna make, we wanna, we may wanna have more than one thousand the tops, tops performance for supercomputing or autonomous driving. So state of art computing chips adopt multi-chipnet and the design. Because for each single chip, the maximum area is limited. So in for the inter chip, multi-chipnet design, inter, inter triplet communication becomes a very important topic. Because you have to make sure the bandwidth and the latency between two chips is do not, do not de- delegate the, the overall performances. Recently, we have many advanced semiconductor fabrication and technologies to try to improve from the very, very original PCB level or substrate level, interconnect to a more advanced level. We I call this silicon manufacturing technology. So what's the difference between the silicon, the silicon fabrication technology and the traditional ones? I have two diagram here. The first, the upper one is the traditional two D integration part. So we can have two chips and we have organic substrates where the routing is implemented on the substrate, substrates. But for the two point five D separate design, we will have another layer, which is normally called interposer. It can be a silicon interposer or an ideal interposer. Both interposer has features, a tiny bump pitch size, normally less than fifteen micrometers and a very short interchip distance, less than five millimeter. So the two point ones, the two point D integration channels features very high interconnected density. And for the channel bandwidth, it is much good, better than the two D ones. Because they are using the silicon fabrication technologies. So for this one, we have, we need to design a specific five or physical, physical layer convert the digital signals into analog ones. And it's because it's data to data communication, so the power performance dominates the overall data to data connection. Recently, we have some standards like U C I E or B O W or A I V, so and so forth. So today's my topics will focus on the agile design for the two point five five. So why we need agile design? As the keynote says, the heterogeneous triplet ecosystem might contain a huge number of the different disciplines. So they may have different manufacturing process technology. Like we have ten eighty nanometers, forty nanometers, or even sixty five nanometers. And we may have different type of chips like memory processors, accelerators, even sensors. So if we design each inter triplet five for each chips, it will be tedious and time consuming mainly because they are most likely analog. So here we wanted to propose an all digital and accessible five design methodology. So since it's a network conference, I will just briefly introduce the circuit implementation. This is their overall architecture. So each five contains a transmitter and their receiver. In our design, we have eight data lines and one clock lines. But if you see U C I E, it will be sixty four data lines and two clock lines. So the key feature of our digital five is that we, for the analog part, we use some digital counterparts. So the first part in the transmitter side is that we use a push, we use a tri-state buffers from standard library and putting them in parallel and configure them by, configure them like a pushboard transponder drivers. Also, to achieve a high energy efficiency, we have a specific power domain for these drivers. For the receiver part, we have a router based front end receiver. And the feature we have here is that we have a termination register free part. The termination register free has true advantage. First is it's saving powers, because if you have a termination register, it will reduce your signal swings. And also, there's a, there's a but traditionally when we, we, why we need to have it, because it is, the signal integrity is very important. But for the two point five D, since the channel is much better than the two D integration. So the channel, the signal integrity can, can improve. Then, then the clock generation part. Traditionally, we use a P I L, but here we use a a clock, a clock doubler. We use a delay line based duty cycle corrector to designer clock doubler. And then we used a multiple state doubler to realize a higher clock. So next is the physical design and the simulation results. So as I mentioned, we want to all everything is digital. Then we can port in from different technology. So all the designs are represented by a structural backlog. And the, and the layout is generated by a traditional or standard placing route E D A tools like here, we use Synopsys IC compiler. So you can see the overall performance we achieved in ten eighty nanometer. It achieves, it achieved a data rate of the six point four gigabyte bits per second per lane. And the overall energy efficiency is zero point four one pickle drop a bit. So we also, we also simulated with a practical inter triplet in the interposer model. So you can see this is a graphical model and we have a E M simulation tools to extract its S parameter and the code simulated with our files. And this is the E M result of our of our, of our interposer model. And this is the overall simulation results between the with the both the E M model and the data to die five. And you can see that for different lens, by use, by configured TX driver stress, we can make sure the signal integrity is good enough. Also, this is the eye diagram simulation result for different lenses. You can see for longer, for longer lens, we can have a worse eye diagram with less eye opening. But for the short, very short, like one point two millimeter lens channels, the eye opening is almost like a digital signal. So what's ongoing or what's more? So since we have the five, we also want to develop a agile design for the for the controller, then we can have different chip where we're using the most common used, common best standard as X I and we have a controller ones with data to die master and that does live and the the file we present here. So we wanted to put everything in a whole package and want to easy to port in with all the agile design. So here's my conclusion. First, we propose a methodology for the agile two point five D five design. And also, we use the, we designed a five for we design a, we designed a five for the using digital standard libraries and simulation results. We have, we achieved the sixty point four gigabit per second data rate and zero point four one pickle job a bit. So thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you, Professor Chen, for your great talk. So any questions?
I do have a quick question. So in the R diagram that you showed, what was the data range in the experiment?
Let me just, sorry, I mean, for the data rate part, we, we may, what we did is the data rate for each lane or each wheel on the, on the on the interposer. So for each TX and IX driver and the receiver, the maximum rate is the six point four gigabit for, for the peak speed. Yes.
Okay, so six point four. Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, it is for, it is for to close the H B M standard.
Any more questions? One, one more question is allowed. Okay, no questions. So let's thank Chi Xia again for his great talk. So the next talk is from Jie Mingying from Nanjing University of Post and Telecommunications. Yeah, let's welcome Jie Mingying. Please go ahead.
All right, can people hear me and see my screen share?
Yes.
All right, great. I saw previous speaker talked about physical layer and my talk today will primarily focus on the network, network layer. So it's in package network design and from an architecture's perspective. As we all know, Mars law is ending. So there are two promising techniques to extend Mars law. The first one is triplet where a large monolithic chip is broken into smaller pieces called triplet. And the second one is heterogeneity, where we integrate diverse computation resources into the same package. And the combination of both triplet and heterogeneity might bring us to the future system where we have multiple C P U triplets, multiple G P U triplets, and there could be even dice stack memories. And all these components are integrated through an active silicon interposer, which is essentially another piece of chip, just bigger. And C P U triplets and G P U triplets, they can all have their own local network on chips. So is the active interposer, right? And these networks together, they are called in package networks. So from an architecture's perspective, we need to do two things loosely, two things. The first one is system integration. Well, these chiplets can be independently designed. But when we put them together and integrate them into the same package, the resulting system, is it still functionally correct? Right? For functionally correct, I mean, is it still deadlock free? And let's say we have some working system in the end. The next thing we want to do is to optimize the network, right? For performance, for throughput, whatever, right? Maybe lower, lower power, right? So let's look at the first problem, system integration. Now, the focus of, of this system integration is deadlock freedom. So we are proposing a modular routing design to avoid deadlock after system integration. Remember, these triplets can be independently designed. Meaning that the chip designers are free to choose their own topologies, their own routing algorithms. So when we put together these triplets, the resulting system can still have deadlock. That's a challenge here. Well, we want to build an ecosystem that we are allow chip designers to design their triplets without much, without too much restrictions. But how to achieve that? So let me first explain why deadlock free triplets, when putting them together, the final system can still be deadlock. This example shows two triplets and one interposer. And both the triplets and the interposer, they use X Y routing and X Y routing by itself is deadlock free. Right? So inside the triplet, inside the interposer, no deadlock. But once we put them together and connect them together, we can actually find resource dependency loops system wise that spans across both triplet and the interposer. And that will create deadlock scenario. Okay, so typically, how we handle this deadlock situation is we analyze the global channel dependency graph. Okay, and remove the cycles. But that is fine when we have small chips like this. When we put together multiple triplets and the interposer, the whole system can be very complex. And to analyze such a global channel dependency graph can be time consumed. And what is worth is, let's say, designers have finalized their designs, okay? There's no deadlock in the, in the system. But suddenly, one chip designer says, hey, I want to modify my local network or I want to change my chip, triplet. And that changes the global C D G. And the whole process needs to start over. And what is worse is sometimes the global C D G might not be available. For example, third party other designers might not want to share their own information. And it's also possible that when I design my triplet, I don't know who I'm going to integrate with. So the other triplet might not have been designed or finalized yet. So there's no way of analyzing the global C D G. Basically, chiplet composability is a hard problem and we need some new approaches without looking at the global C D G. Our proposal is a composable routing. Sometimes it is called M T R modular turn restrictions. The key insight for our proposal is as a chiplet designer, we only need to focus on our own triplet. That is in this picture, the chiplet on the left, while abstracting rest of a system away with a single abstract node like the red node here. Then we connect our triplet with the abstract node. And the only thing we need to guarantee is that the new system is deadlock free. That's it. So how do we guarantee the new system is deadlock free? We apply turn restrictions on boundary routers. And then we program the routing tables accordingly. Once this is done, chiplet designers only need to share this, you know, turn restriction information with the system designer, not with other chiplet designers. So that keeps confident, the sensitive information confidential. Okay, then the system integrator. Okay, then uh the system integrator will design the uh active interposer network. And of course, the interposer network by itself should be deadlock free. Okay. So uh of course, there are other design uh. Issues, for example, how to select boundary routers, but uh I'm just skipping those information uh due to a lack of time. So in summary, M T R addresses an important challenge for composability. And it allows designers to design and optimize individual chiplets independently. Now we have a working uh system to some extent, right? Uh the next thing is to optimize the in package interconnection network for better uh performance. So that leads us to the second part of my talk, system optimization. Uh the challenge here is to optimize network performance for complex system is challenging. Okay, it's difficult because there are diverse computational units integrated. Some are more sensitive to throughput, some are more sensitive to latency. Right? As a human designer, it's actually hard to balance these requirements. And make a good design that satisfy all the uh, you know, uh design requirements. So what we propose is to use machine learning, right? We handle the the heavy lifting work to machine learning and let a machine learning develop something for us. We take uh N O C orbiter as an example. And uh we use machine learning to design a a a better orbiter for us. So here is the whole flow, the picture on the right is our our flow. Basically, what we are going to do is we replace the N uh the uh network. The router arbiter with a neural network. Then through simulation, we learn a neural network that does arbitration. Now, once we have a neural network trained, we're going to uh convert this neural network into something implementable. Okay. So the technique we use is reinforcement learning. And basically, this figure shows we replace the arbiter with a, you know, multi-layer perceptron. And through simulation, we learn this neural network that does pretty good arbitration decisions. So that is this part, okay, we have a neural network. But there is no way of implementing a neural network in circuitry and put into chips. Okay, a neural network by itself is worth uh of a chip size. So what we're going to do next is to uh convert this neural network into something. Implementable either pseudo code or even better combination logic directly. So how do we do that? Um our uh approach is to uh distill the useful information from neural network using. Tree based models, either decision trees or linear model trees. Um basically, we use the input and the output generated by the neural network to train a simple decision tree. And uh the good thing for decision tree is converting a decision tree to combination logic is relatively straightforward. Basically, we just need to do some regularization. Uh to avoid over uh fitting and we do some weight quantization. Right? And uh the figure on the right shows how we convert uh. Uh a tree node into uh combination logic. Right? So this altogether is our uh machine learning based architectural. Uh design automation process. Uh for uh complex systems. Uh summary for this part. Uh machine learning can automate architectural design and we achieve that. Uh but problem formulation can be still challenging. Basically, we need to use the right machine learning model for the right problem. And that is uh still challenging. And looking forward. There are a lot more opportunities in triplet plus active interposer systems. For example, what if we put um accelerators and reconfigurable uh logic into the system? How do we integrate them together? And how do you design a uh cache coherence protocol? Uh that unifies the 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 uh the data. Like the caching data. And what is the best memory architecture for such a system? And uh when we do heterogeneous integration and stack things up. Uh on the Z dimension, there will be thermal issues and how we solve those issues. So uh that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. You great uh talk. So any questions for the audience? Audiences can also type the questions directly in the chat box. Okay, thank you again for the great talk. And next, uh let's invite uh Wen Xu Tao for the. Uh from University of Electronic Science and Technology of China. Yeah, uh Wen Xu, please go ahead.
Uh okay, can you hear me? Can you hear my voice?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, Wen Xu. Uh sorry, sorry, uh I checked the the chat box. Uh I think the question is for uh Jimmy. Uh the question is, do you, how do you guarantee that? The R L based arbiter is somewhat fair starvation doesn't occur?
Oh, great question. Yeah, so uh starvation is something. Uh human designers, as a human designers, we need to take consideration. Uh basically, there's no guarantee that the R L based arbiter. Gives us something that is uh life lock free. Or starvation free. So um uh. One thing to avoid that, one way to avoid that is uh in a simulation, we monitor. The the starvation scenario. And by taking that into the reward function in reinforcement learning. Hopefully, um we can remove starvation from the beginning. Basically, from the uh machine learning model. Uh otherwise, when it comes to the final design, either pseudo code or combination logic. The human designers still need to reevaluate the policy to make sure starvation never happen. Uh does that answer your question, Ryan? All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, yeah. So Wen Xu, please go ahead, yeah.
Can you see my screen? Uh the the full screen?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Uh hello, everyone, and I am Wen Xu Hao from. University of Electronic Science and Technology of China. And my talk is the uh deadlock free design model and algorithms. And in the uh. In the last report, Mr. Yin uh introduced his proposed that uh modular term restriction algorithm. A modular term restriction scheme. And my uh and my work and our work is based on his scheme and so. Uh in this report, I will introduce the details. Uh for example, the uh mathematical models and my proposed optimization schemes. And this is the outline of this report. And here we show the overview of the modular term restriction scheme, which is called M T R. And to save our time, I just uh skipped the uh some details and focus on the layer two. That is the term restriction algorithm. It is the core algorithm of M T R. And now we focus on T R A, the term restriction algorithm. And we show an example of a four by four mesh network with three boundary routers. The boundary routers are connected to the rest of the system and manages the inbound and outbound traffic. The boundary terms happen on the boundary routers. In this example, there are nine inbound turns and nine outbound turns. So there are eighteen boundary turns in total. The core site of T R A is to restrict some boundary turns to break the deadlock loop. Between the current network and the rest of the system. And the T R A can be described as a. An optimization problem. Here we show the format of the problem and where S is a solution. And corresponding to a binary term restriction combination. And S and R represents the solution space. It is the set of solutions with no more than R restrictions on N boundary terms. And the size of the solution space is uh this format. Uh we can see some of a combinatorial numbers, uh because every possible uh combination should be considered. And G S is the C D G of the solution. And phi S is the objective function. It was defined by uh Mr. Yin as the average boundary distance divided by the average boundary reachability. And it should be noted that the term restriction should be placed very carefully because if we set to field restrictions. Then we cannot eliminate all deadlock loops. And if we set too many restrictions, the network will be unconnected. So we can see the parameter R here can save our time by avoiding deep recursion. Uh but unfortunately, this problem is still NP hard and there is no fast algorithms to solve it. As far as we know. And to reduce uh the iterations as much as possible. T R A adopts the idea of branch and bound to perform prunings. The structure of T R A can be described as a tree. And we call it recursive combinatorial tree, R C T. And here we show an example with six boundary turns and R is set to four. So our mission is to search through the S six four to get the optimal solution. And it should be noted that every solution is represented by a node in the R C T. For example, the node A along with all of its parents node. Represents the combination of two, three, five. And the node B along with all of its parent nodes represent the combination of three, four, five, six. So the number, uh sorry, so the number of nodes equals the size of S and R. And every level of the R C T represent the uh position in the combination. There are at most the R positions in a combination, so the number of levels equals R. And to search through all possible combinations, T R A should visit every node in the R C T in turn. Here we show the visiting track of T R A and we can see it's the envelope curve of the R C T. At each level, T R A visits the nodes in ascending order of their labels. To achieve branching bound, T R A should perform return operations in the following situations. First, the objective function would not optimize the in the current state. Then if we search deeper to set more restrictions. It cannot optimize the objective function anymore, so we should return. Second, the C D G is unconnected. Then more restrictions will only make it worse, so we should return. Third, the C D G has no loop. It means we get an optimal solution and more restrictions will not make the solution better, so we should return. The return operation is the procedure of pruning. It reduces the number of iteration from the size of the solution space. But uh we want to uh improve the the efficiency of the searching, so. We may ask, are there some ways to improve the pruning rate of T R A? We found the breakthrough point that T R A doesn't specify the labeling order of the boundary turns and. By specifying specifying favorable order, we can improve pruning rate. But how to determine the favorable order? We propose an important hypothesis that. The combination of multiple preferable boundary turn individuals is preferable to. The first preferable means more likely to be contained in the optimal combination. And the second preferable means more likely to be the optimal sub combination. And based on this hypothesis, we proposed an improved method called pre-salt T R A. It consists of two steps. Step one is presuming for each boundary turn T I, we apply the. Objective function on it and get phi S T I. Where the S T I is the solution containing only T I. Then we sort and label all terms according to the value of phi S T I. Label one means the uh least preferable and the label N means the most preferable. Step two is searching. As shown is in this figure, at each level, we search in the opposite direction. That is in descending order of the labels of the terms. In this way, the optimal solution is more likely to be visited at the beginning of the search, so. There are more opportunities for the subsequent search to perform return operation. And then we can get a larger pruning rate. And we performed evaluation on a four by four mesh network with X Y routing strategy. And discovered that our proposed result T R A can reduces the. Can reduce the number of iteration by from uh four percent to more than fifty percent compared with T R A. And uh this is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Uh thanks, Wen Xu, for the great talk. So any questions? If the audience can use the chat box to type your questions. Okay, thanks, Wen Xu, again for your great talk. So next, uh this invites uh Professor Yari from University of Arkansas. Okay, yeah, uh Yari, please go ahead.
Okay, so uh uh can all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so uh my name is Yari Pom, Assistant Professor at Computer Science, Command Engineering Department at University of Arkansas. So uh we are going to talk about our uh chip package co-design, E D F flows and the physical uh design strategies. Um so uh here at Arkansas, what we are focusing is the E D A tools and the uh the physical design. So if you look at, if you ever designed a triplet fat package, you'll see those existing packaging tools are essentially just the same as the P C B design tools. They basically just have a shrink version of those uh P C B design. Uh but unfortunately, that chip uh package, uh this interaction is not considered at all for those tools. And the the with triplet, uh the package becomes much more important than it was before. And you have to pay extra attention on precise um signal integrity and power integrity on sermon and everything. So uh in that sense, that uh there's there's no industry common standard for this. A chip package co-interaction co-design flow, so that's what we are proposing for it. And another thing that we want to address is that, well, if we break a monolithic chip into triplets. That you're going to introduce additional overhead between the triplets, right? So and we try to minimize those overhead, we try to make the each triple will act as fast and efficient as. While you're doing it in the monolithic two D fashion. Uh a third problem that we we observe is that, well, uh once we go into heterogeneous integration, which is the. Uh the shining bit of the uh triplet interaction. Is that uh we also need to care for the uh proprietary information between and privacy between each uh each triplet vendors. So for example, that if we have multiple companies providing those triplets, how do they work together? Are they going to share all the information? Are they going to, how do they, what is the communication protocol between the uh each vendors? Um so uh if you look at the traditional design flow for the triplet package, that's essentially these two separate. Uh design flows are never really talking to each other until the last stage. So you basically have the each triplets will perform with placement routing plan, floor planning and static timing analysis. And then the package will perform uh basically the routing on the on the package level, S I and P I analysis. But until the at this moment that the package and the triplet, they don't work together, they basically they're still separate. So until that you actually assemble them into a package and tested everything, we don't know if the final package will work or not. And this is a huge gap between these two societies. Um so what we're trying to do is we're trying to combine the chip and the package into the early design stage. So that uh the triplet guys knows how the package is designed and the package knows how the chip. Uh this is performed so that we can plan early so that we can uh minimize the overhead. We can reduce the engineering margin and we can reduce the uh time for iterative kind of repetitive task. So this is what we call holistic design flow. Uh the key important ingredient is that we need to put these planning very early into the system design. Uh, come up with uh what we call interconnection wire load, wire load model so that each one, each other will know. Okay, what is the per six, what is the capacitive load, what's the timing delay requirement, what's the timing constraints? And then that we need to assemble that before we actually finalize uh the the design. And we're going to perform a holistic analysis, which can provide combines all of the triplets, the package routing. And perform detailed per six on all of everything, so that we have a whole holistic view of the system. And then we have enough confidence that we can proceed and fabricate a design. So just to demonstrate idea, we use a very simple ARM Cortex uh zero uh. Uh, core here, so uh for this one, just demonstration. So we partitioned these uh this design into a core triplet and a memory triplet. So core triplet contains all of the logic portion plus about eight kilobyte of SRAM, so cache. And then we have a memory triplet that contains another eight kilobyte of SRAM. So this is kind of core uh core triplet itself can act as a standalone system. But you can add some additional cache by using a two point five D or three D fashion. So this is essentially uh the same idea that AMD is using in their Zen three D product. So but they they're using the three D integration and we're presenting this as a two point five D solution. Um, so in order to perform this holistic analysis, we have to create a P D K that includes all of the layers from the chip and all of the layers in the package. So uh we use Nanget forty five as our base P D K, but we use M one to M seven, that's uh all modified for triplet routing. But then we modify the top three layers to match with what is uh T M C, T S M C two point five, the info technology. So we modify the width spacing thickness and everything so that we can have a holistic P D K that we can use. And then, um, so if you look at the existing, the 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 package design tools, all of the routing are down pretty much manually. They're all automatic router, doesn't work, doesn't really work, nobody is really using them. But with all those triplets pins and with the scalability of the triplets. We definitely will need an automatic router, automatic placement router for the triplets. Uh, so to as to begin with, we also started uh working on the uh placement routing of the of the triplets. And this is one of the uh router that is we use for this this project. And it generates the wires connections uh directly automatically uh between these two triplets. So these three layers shows the routing that we use. I don't know, for this uh this project, we use a very simple agreedly based algorithm for the for the routing, because we only have point to point connections. But we have, once we have multiple triplets, then we use our network flow based router. That's uh we're collaborating with National Qinghua University uh to uh kind of propose a new routing scheme. Uh, so with the routing down, then then we can perform each uh chip and uh memory uh core triplet and memory triplet. Uh, with the physical design, with the placement routing. Uh, but in this case, because we already have the package routing, so we can use package wire load model while we're building our chips. So in that case, all of the pins already know what is the package parasitics, what is the uh capacitive load? And what is the timing constraints between each other? And then we can assemble them. Now assembly becomes much easier because we already consider all of those parasitic from package and triplets altogether. So we should be able to get a pretty close view of what the system will look like. And this shows a exact zooming shot of all of the layers. As you can see, all of the layers from triplet and the layers on the package are showing the same design here. And with that, we can perform our holistic per city extraction, which essentially is extracting all of the parasitics from the triplet package together. So uh this uh table shows what the all of the capacity values from the all the metal layers. As you can see here, from between the triplets, M one to M seven, this is what the traditional flow can can extract, this green regions. Parasitics from the triplets, parasitics from the uh. Package layers, well, they can dump, they can be performed separately in the traditional flow. But what is missing is what is the interaction between the triplets and the package? So these red portion is never been really extracted before. And this is the first time we can actually demonstrate that with the holistic analysis. And with that, all of the those detailed analysis, then then we can perform holistic uh timing and power analysis of the system. But as I can see here, if you use a monolithic design chip, we can get a very high frequency. Well, uh, we don't have any overhead. But if we just plug in the triplet and the core uh core triplet and memory triplet together, well, you'll get the reduction in the performance. Well, uh, it's understandable, right? You have longer wires. But the question is, can we reduce this? Can we make this number very close to this number? Right? The answer is yes, we need to perform what we call iterative up uh optimization. So what essentially it does is that once you assemble the system, then you have a updated uh holistic view. You need to update your timing context, your timing constraint for each uh triplet and the package design. Now you can reperform another iteration of your triplet design placement route so that you know exactly where you should insert buffers, where you should uh insert drivers. So that it can kind of close up this timing gap. So you can see here, our initial design only achieved two hundred forty five megahertz in terms of frequency. But our final design with iterative updates, we get three hundred megahertz, which is very close to this two D monolithic design. Of course, there's still going to be a little bit overhead, but we basically closed the gap as much as we can with iterative update and holistic timing view. But then the problem is, okay, so the previous word, the the holistic analysis works for homogeneous design. Meaning that if if all of the triplets are designed by the same vendor, like M D, they design their triplets, they design their packages. So there's there's no secret between each team, right? But let's say if the Intel is designed their processor and Samsung is designing a memory chip and you want to integrate down to the same package. Now the question is that if we use holistic analysis, that which require you to share all of the layers from your design, is that possible, right? So you're basically giving out all of the trade secret, right? So about your company, about your design, so is that even possible? So we say that's definitely not. But for homo uh heterogeneous design, that's a big issue, the the I P protection is what we need to be careful. So um then we propose this so-called in-context design flow for heterogeneous systems. So the idea is very simple, so if you ever use the object oriented programming. And you know that this concept of object is essentially about abstraction of different objects, right? You have public interface and you have private that that's within hold within. And same thing, we can treat each triplet and the package as an object. We can create interface for each object that expose just enough information for the other side. So that they will be able to uh see a little bit into the design. And we can perform detailed per six extraction, timing analysis that is used for the holistic view. But then we can keep some of the critical part, that is the lower part, lower side, these device layers, some metal one to metal three layers perhaps. So those are essentially still kept as private and those are essentially uh kept within the company. Uh, this way that we can create a common interface for that uh heterogeneity integration to be ever possible in the industry. So the concept is that we are going to create in-context design, which the triplet will see a little bit into the package. This is why we call the package context. And the same thing, package will see a little bit into the triplet. So this will create a a timing view for the package design. And then we can combine them and we need to essentially treating uh some of the designs as a as a portion of the triplets as blackboard box. But expose a part of the the routing layers on top so that it can be used for the package design. So same thing for the other triplet, you don't really see the the details of the the triplets that that does not belong to you. But it know a little bit about the top middle layers, which we call interface layers, that it can be used for your timing and routing. And this is what the 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 result we get. So uh we're trying to use the same concept to match with our holistic view so that we see, okay, so what is the error that it will be introduced? Because you don't see the everything, right? So it's definitely going to introduce a little bit arrow, uh, but how large is that arrow? Well, the error is pretty small with the post-processing with a careful analysis. When gets the in-context designs almost having negligible error compared with our holistic analysis. Which means that it should be able to uh perform the exactly same performs on the uh top level. So uh and our flow can be very uh can support agile uh two point five D designs. What this means is that you can come up with different package triplet configurations. You can have just a single uh core triplet uh itself works as a standalone circuit. You can have a single uh core triplet plus two of these two uh uh four kilobyte cache, so two cache triplets. You can have a single uh four kilobyte uh cache triplets, but just ignore the other one uh without changing your package layers. Or you can optimize your package layers just for this four kilobyte package. Okay, so uh this, all of these four design flavors are uh essentially supported. And you can perform these updates very quickly and having a variation of the products using the triplets and the uh heterogeneous integration. So and eventually we want to say, okay, will this work in the in the real system? And the answer is yes, we actually taped out our design in the T S M C six five nanometer design. So but we don't have like a commercial two point five D uh system. So what we did is essentially we changed the three top layers to match with the the width and spacing of the earlier layers. And then we use the same concept to build a triplet in the uh uh two D uh technology. So this is kind of mimic the what uh what is a holistic analysis view for our triplet uh interaction. So we compare the two point five D system with a two D system. And we see that the functionality and timing performance are all matching with each other. So as a conclusion, that triplet package interaction needs to be considered. And our flow, uh both holistic and incontext can accurately extract all of these interactions and optimize the timing impact. So for ho- ho- homogeneous systems, it's best to use the holistic flow. And for heterogeneous systems, it's best to use incontext uh system flow, design flow. So that we can uh analyze and but still protect I P for each companies. So as a future work that we're going to perform other cross boundary uh uh parasitics, including the inductance. And I'll also try to integrate with not just a silicon uh triplets, but also power electronic systems. Like getting a nitride and silicon carbide, so that we can have the power supply and the chip computing or perform in the same package. So uh that concludes my talk. Any questions would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Yari, for your great talks since we are already running out of time, so uh we will skip the questions, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so the next, as the last one, uh, the last talk is from um Professor Bolivian Palace at the University of Kentucky. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sir Young. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, so thank you. So I present this work entitled the multi-objective hardware mapping optimization for triplet based D N N accelerators. And this work is a cooperation with uh Jitdas and Eric Corus. So let me start with uh what is known as the Turing tariff. That uh can be summarized in general terms like considering the execution spent for uh an instruction by an instruction executed in a general purpose processor. And if you consider the energy, this is just a small amount of of the overall energy consumed. Uh, due to the fact that many of the energy is used for uh control related tasks like fetch and decode. Uh, of course, this is situation is very different when you compare it with ASIC implementations that are specified for a specific uh function, for executing a specific function. So uh improve very much the efficiency. But there is a midpoint solution that is uh that of using uh domain specific architecture. Uh, which is an hardware computing engine that is specialized for a particular domain of applications. And nowadays, we have a lot of different domains spanning from graphics, deep learning simulation and so on. We also have a a great amount of commercial chip that are devoted for uh improving the efficiency in such domains. And uh to have an idea on how these uh D S A are widely used in a current uh S O C platform. This is an example that show the Apple A twelve system on a chip in which you can see that's a great deal of the area is used for implementing such uh domain specific accelerators. Uh, so this presentation will focus on D N N hardware accelerators. And uh many of them comes in the form of a monolithic D N N accelerators. Which are formed by an array of processing elements interconnected by a specialized network on a chip and uh memory archive. And we did a test, we uh we simulate different layers coming from the same same network model, which is the R S Net fifty. And we run these layers on a different uh architecture, namely here is seen by Shidi Anau. And we plot the normalized uh energy delay product. And as you can see, there is no winner, there is not a um best uh accelerator. That is the best for each of the considerable layer. So one of the uh most viable solution is to consider heterogeneous D N N accelerators. That are formed by a a set of sub-accelerators with a different architecture. And here the problem is how to uh is to select the most appropriate sub-accelerator when you map a specific layer of a D N N. And uh so we focus on our reference platform, which is a D N N multi-accelerator system. Uh, in the form of a multi-chip based the design. Uh, we consider chiplets that uh uh implements the sub-accelerators. They are connected by a network on a page, package in a passive interposer. And so the problem that we want to solve, try to solve is uh is the following. So let's start from an input, which is the application model that you want to execute in our platform. This is in the form of a set of concurrent D N N models that we want to execute. And uh the other inputs is a library of parameterized the sub-accelerator templates. They are parameterized in terms of uh number of processing elements and the amount of memory uh that we want to use. Uh, so we can tune these to mainly these two parameters. And what we want to to obtain is to is the parrot optimal sets of system configurations that optimize towards different objectives. So we consider area, energy and latency. Uh, each point of this parrot set is a system configuration that is how many uh sub-accelerator we need to use. Uh, for each accelerator, uh, the architectural template it comes from. And for each of them, uh, the particular stance in terms of number of processing element and uh amount of memory uh they use. And also for each of these uh system configuration, we want also to obtain the optimal schedule. That is how the different layer are mapped in the different sub-accelerators and the dependency among them. Because you can map when when two layers are mapped on that same uh sub-accelerator, you have to decide the order. So this is the problem and uh we design a methodology called Moham, which is for multi-objective hardware mapping optimization. And uh Moham uh perform a this a multi-objective, multi-objective exploration of the design space. Problem is not very new, there are uh different works that try to do the same. Uh, many of them are focused on a particular subspace of the overall design space. There are works that focus on uh exploring the hardware design space or exploring the mapping space. Or allow to use a uh multi-tennis approach or uh perform a multi-objective optimization. As you can see, uh, our uh Moham covers all these points that we think are important to uh cover while um while exploring this huge design space. Uh, we implemented Moham uh using a genetic algorithm, a multi-objective genetic algorithm. And as you know, uh, when Morgan used for a for um for solving a problem, the most important uh. The most important points are to define the chromosome and the genetic operators. Uh, of course, there is no time to cover in detail what is the the chromosome and the and the um and the uh operators, the genetic operators. Just say that the chromosome is divided into part one and called the hardware part of the system and the other the schedule. Uh, where is the um the genetic operators that we defined? Uh, we uh actually defined a set of specialized genetic operators that's allowed to uh improve the convergence time of the algorithms. And allow to obtain a better solution as compared to the traditional genetic operator. So uh the important aspect of the work is the definition of specialized genetic uh operators. That greatly include that improve the performance of the of the uh multi-objective genetic algorithms that we have used. So let me brief review some of the experiments. We consider different workload spanning from mobile age, uh A R V R data center. And uh here are the exploration parameters we used. In particular, we considered uh three different class of architectural templates, Iris like, Simba like, and Shidi Anau. And we simulate uh all the the system uh using our platform called the Lambda, which is based on time loop accelerator infrastructure. So the solution that we obtain are something like that, this is what we obtain. It means that each point of the parrot set corresponds to something like that. We have for each sub-accelerator, uh, the layers that are marked with that specific sub-accelerators. And of course, when the 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 timing in which that layer is. And of course, when the 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 timing in which that layer is executed and so the color and the intensity of the color respectively are the the refer to the kind of of the accelerators and the specific DNN model mapped on that sub-accelerator, where is the black lines correspond to the point in which we have some bottleneck due to the limited bandwidth. And overall, the results are in the form of Pareto optimal sets. Uh in this case, on a 3D Pareto sets, uh energy, latency and area. This is an experiment in which we showed the Pareto set uh obtained it when we perform the uh the hardware mapping optimization uh compared to the all the the expression of the only ma- mapping space or the only hardware space. And as you can see, the solution found by uh performing the hardware mapping optimization are provides very interesting trade-off solutions. And there are other experiments, for instance, comparing the homogeneous versus heterogeneous sub-accelerators and uh and uh and comparing the multi-objective approach um uh with the mono-objective uh approach. And as you can see here, when you explore the single objective, uh you uh as respect to when you perform a multi-objective exploration, uh you you can miss important trade-off solutions. Uh these are an example in which uh blue points represents the exploration uh for optimizing the only energy objective. Or the red, when you uh optimize, you want to optimize just latency, whereas the points, the black points, the Pareto set found by MoHAM, when you want to optimize both of objectives simultaneously. As you can see, you 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 find not only the uh blue and the red's points, but also a set of trade-off solution that are very interest. So in conclusion, uh uh DSA are viable solution for addressing the so-called Turing tariff. We made the case of multi-tenant uh heterogeneous multi-accelerator system. Uh we consider a MCM-based design paring to deal with scalability and complexity issues. Uh however, the design space is huge and we propose a MoHAM, which is a multi-objective uh design space exploration technique uh that allows to perform the hardware-software co-optimization. So thank you very much for the attention and uh with this, I conclude my talk.
Okay, thank you, Moliziu, for your great talk. And thanks everyone for attending our special session.